All right, board members, any more conversation on the 7422 and 7425?
I've got questions. It's David brought it up. Do any of our current administrators have automobiles in their contracts?
No.
You want to say that for the record, so no is the answer.
Okay. I think that both of those should be, we should vote on those openly. I think they should be on the open agenda.
All right, so we'll have 7420, 7422, and 7425 all on the action agenda for our next meeting, I mean for the next, yes.
Actually, I'm not sure that's what Ms. Carpenter was, I think she was saying that that should be, she's approving of the policy language requiring an open vote. Were you asking for it to be on the action item?
Yeah, I think we should vote on them since it's something that we're saying we're going to do then.
Were you asking for this policy to be on the action agenda next week?
Yeah.
Yeah, she was asking for that we should vote on them.
We should take direct responsibility and obligation for the vote on these contractual details as a board at a policy level, I think is what Ms. Carpenter is saying, which I agree with.
Gotcha. 7635?
That is a return to work policy for workman's comp. We've had a return to work policy for workman's comp for a long, long time, so this just complies with, again, what we're already doing, something that we strongly encourage people who have a workman's comp claim to return to work as soon as possible.
Dr. Phillips?
I had one problem with it, and that's the second to last paragraph. It says, "If an employee refuses an approved transitional duty assignment or other suitable employment offered under this policy and/or under the return to work program required by this policy, the superintendent designated shall direct the workers' comp administrator to apply to terminate the workers' compensation benefits in accordance with North Carolina law. In addition, the employee may be subject to disciplinary action." There's no appeal? I mean, somebody says, you know, "You are going to have to go, even though you're normally working as a janitor at Cox Mill High School, we're going to make you come out here to the central office because that's where you can do some desk work." And they may say, "But I don't have a car, I can't, my wife normally drops me off at Cox Mill, but she can't drive me all the way out here." There's no opportunity to appeal that. It just says, "If you don't approve it, if you don't accept it, you're out of here. No pay for you." Boom.
I think they could certainly grieve that decision through the employee grievance process, if, you know, that would be a decision that would be grievable.
Then we should put that in the policy.
And we could, and I think we could certainly, yeah, I think a cross-reference to the employee grievance policy is probably a good, we can add that in.
So we're just going to add the cross-reference?
I think Dr. Phillips's point is well taken because policy would be applied literally the way it was written, as opposed to then going through the appeals process and in hindsight wishing that things had gone differently. So that kind of appeals process ought to be referenced in here explicitly, so that if that scenario, you know, comes up, everybody understands that there is that appeals process as an extra step.
Okay, we'll cross-reference the grievance policy in that policy.
All right, board members, that will be on the action agenda. And we got 7950, non-career status teachers.
The first part is required, and then the other recommended part is add procedural rights for teachers who are recommended for contract renewal, consistent with recent decision in the North Carolina Court of Appeals, and that one is recommended. So, again, seems like simple ones that we would want to go along with based on current law.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm confused as to why the paragraph in red is in there near the bottom that starts, "In considering a recommendation of the superintendent to offer a new contract or renewed contract," blah, 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 blah. This isn't about offering new contracts, this is about non-renewal of existing teachers. So why do we have text in here about if we're going to consider a renewed or existing contract renewal?
That's a good, I think I can try to answer, it's a good question in terms, the reason, what happened, and the reason, what I think the School Board Association is trying to address is a recent decision, the Toby Williams versus New Hanover County Board. What happened there is, the teacher was proposed for renewal of her contract along with 100 other teachers, but the board had some information about that teacher, and they decided, they didn't like the way she was performing, called for a personnel file, looked it over and said, "We're not going to renew." And the teacher sued, saying, "I had no notice that you were going to not renew me. The superintendent recommended me for renewal." And the court agreed with the teacher, saying, "The board has a right to challenge the recommendation, but they've got to give some notice to the teacher that they're going to be doing that and give the teacher an opportunity for a hearing, so you don't just have the teacher assuming that she's been put forward for renewal and then finding out, no, the board voted no." In terms of, so I think that's what they're trying to accomplish in the language. I agree with you, Dr. Phillips, that it's kind of confusing to talk about a recommendation of renewal in the non-renewal section, although what the board, what we're trying to address is really a board making a decision to non-renew despite a recommendation of renewal. And I'm open to your thoughts on that award, that one clearly.
Maybe if we just say, "In concerning whether to reject the recommendation of the superintendent to renew, for a new renewed or extended contract," we can do this. I'd also just delight in what you said, it shouldn't be, if the board determines it needs additional information, then they will notify the teacher, because the board in what you're talking about, it sounds like they didn't need additional information, they had the information and they said, "No, you're out." So there's, if, you know, if, in that case, this policy wouldn't hold, because it's a, "Oh, we don't need additional information, we already got it, additional information, we don't need to notify the teacher, therefore, gone." So it seems to me that it needs to say, "If the board determines that it will," or, you know, that if the board, I don't know, I mean, maybe send it back to pick about it.
That's a good point, and I think it is probably, as I reread it, it's worth rewording that language, the suggested language, because I think those are both good points. Why don't you let me take a crack this week at rewording and put it on the action agenda, and then we'll bring it back with clearer wording on that.
I have two other wording questions. On the first sentence, instead of "may refuse," what may decide not to renew, would that make And then the second paragraph, one, two, three, four, five lines down, where it talks about, "A teacher may request within 10 calendar days receipt of superintendent recommendation, the written notice of the reasons for the superintendent's recommendation for non-renewal and the information that the superintendent says may not, may share." Well, that's already occurred, so has shared, is that correct?
No, actually, I think the sequence is, the superintendent gives notice to the teacher that he's not going to recommend renewal, but he hasn't shared anything with the board yet. And then, "You have 10 days to say, I need, I want to know the reasons that you're going to do it." So I think that piece is fine. I'm good with the change at the beginning about, instead of, say again, instead of "refuse to renew," you were going to say "decide not to."
Decide not to.
Okay, we'll change that.
Just "may not renew." May not renew the contract of any non-career status for any cause it deems sufficient.
If we are going to make changes to this, Dr. Louder, can you remind me, we had a discussion where I was hung up on the word "the board." Does this board talk to teachers, or is it the superintendent or his designee, which would be the HR department? I was confused about the use of the word throughout this policy in reference to the board, which I took to mean us. I mean, we don't talk to a teacher directly. It's the superintendent's recommendation that we do X, but the way this is worded, it sounds like the board directly negotiates with the teacher. We had a discussion about that, and I'm still not, I'm still hung up on why we talk about board actions in this policy vis-à-vis teachers' employment.
I know exactly what you're talking about, we spent some time on that because you asked the question, but I'm not 100% sure of exactly what she said, except for that, in essence, everything that happens is from the board, even though you may not communicate it, it's the board through the superintendent, through his or her designee, if that makes any sense. So, no, you don't speak with them directly, but the appeal goes all the way up to you. So at the end of the day, you are the policymaker, you are the decision maker, so the board says X, even though you may not say it.
But practically every other policy that we have uses the superintendent or his designee as the standard kind of language. So, but there was a reason.
And I think it's when you're talking about, and Mark may take this and run a different way, when you're talking about hiring and dismissing, superintendent or designee does not decide to non-renew, that ultimately rests with the board, and Mark may correct me if I'm wrong.
I do think that's right. And so at the end, where you're talking about the board notifying teachers, or, you know, it is, it may be doing something different than what the superintendent recommends, so it's not really superintendent. You may be, you know, that's one where you'd ask me or Ms. Monroe to send a notification to the teacher of the decision on a hearing, because that's coming really from the board, it's not really coming from the superintendent.
Thank you for correcting me.
So what, did we decide to change the first line? Because I think there was a second suggestion, I don't know where we got to.
I had just suggested that instead of "may refuse to renew," just say, "may not renew." Still may. We may not renew the contract of any non-career status teacher, just make it simple. But I'm not a wordsmith. All right, folks, so we're going to go back to, board members, we're going to go back to 4154.
And remember, we'll go back, especially for, I know we have two board members, two new board members. 4154 is, most of the policies that we're going to get and bring before you are changes from the State School Board Association and their recommendations from them. Once in a while, rarely, once or twice a year, we have a policy that's just our local policy completely written by us. And 4154 is that. So it is the Cabarrus County Magnet policy, and again, there was two or three meetings now where we've had discussion, and then we had really about a two-hour discussion to get to the policy that we have now. I think agreement on everything that we have in the policy except the issue that I mentioned earlier.
All right, Mr. Walter, you have got some additional.
And I do want to thank Chris and Louie, come to the policy committee and share my concerns. What I did address is tried to make a policy that was, that we had put into, basically, I'd asked for a policy because we had a substantial amount of students that were removed from our program that probably didn't need to be removed from our program because we didn't give them notice, a lot of different issues. This policy helps with that. I mean, we have a good STEM program, we have a good IB program, we've got good early college program, and we want to encourage people and families to participate in those programs and get engaged in those programs. So I think having a policy that sets, you know, what the expectations are is a good thing, and that's why I've asked for a policy to be written. I still have, a lot of my changes here revolve more around philosophy. As you mentioned, David and I have some disagreements, but I've got a couple of changes on this version, and I'd like to go through those with you all. And I think the first one, under A2, it says, "Magnet schools, magnet program schools, magnet expectations shall be approved annually by the superintendent or designee." I think that needs to say that each magnet school, program has to be reviewed annually by the superintendent or designee and approved by the board with a report to the board, and this is along the lines of, we get a report annually from McKenty-Vento and some other issues, but a report to the board on the number of students in the program, the performance of that program, how the students have done, the demographics of the students that are in there, the satisfaction level that we have for the folks that are in that program, the number of applications that we received, and the anticipated number of students for the next grade. That would be under number two, under A. And under B, between two and three, I'd like to add another item, and this would be very similar to the number two. It says, number two says, "High school magnet programs have been designated admission entry window in order to support the program fidelity. The early college IB STEM programs may only be entered in the ninth grade only or by transferring from substantially similar program or another district." I think we need to do the same thing, or a similar thing, for the middle school students, because they also would be at a disadvantage. You have an accelerated math program, that's for the STEM, for example, that they expect students to be taking Algebra I in eighth grade. Well, you've got students that don't take Algebra I, can still get into this program, they're at a major disadvantage. I think, okay, that would be, so I think something similar to that would be, is necessary in that section.
Excuse me, let me just clarify what you're asking for. So in this particular, you're asking that there be an insertion between B2 and B3, and it would refer to the middle school admission entry window?
Yes.
I mean, my first reaction to that is, both of the changes that we have here, we didn't discuss in any of the meetings with that group, so I would, you know.
Again, yeah, they're philosophy, more changes than.
Right, we have, you know, there were representations, that one, from curriculum and also from our magnet schools. I honestly don't know if there would be some objections to that, but I'm a little uncomfortable with making a lot of changes that we left the meeting and didn't make, because I don't have the support of the 12 or 15 people that were in the room, that when we left, I felt like we all supported everything except A2. The A2 issue that Mr. Walters referring to was the thing that was still left open. But moving on beyond that is, you know, can be specific.
Again, we had left it.
I'm sorry, Rob, could you go over that, what you just described one more time? The B2 entry for middle school?
Okay. What I'm trying to say is, we have a high school program and a middle school program, it's substantially the same in some areas, that the students will be at a disadvantage if they go into this program, having not taken these advanced math courses, if they go into the eighth grade. And that is exactly what we're saying here, we don't want people to jump into the high school program, because there's courses that they haven't taken, and they'll be behind. So that's the thought process, and again, this is a board discussion, philosophy kind of discussion on that.
Can I speak to that just a little bit? We maybe ran into this a little bit at the elementary level, where some elementaries were, are able to recommend a higher math for their students going into sixth grade than other elementaries. And so that does put them at an advantage for one of the more academically focused magnet programs. So I think, I think I agree with.
Maybe there should be some kind of a caveat to that.
I think I agree with what you're saying.
Okay. And then my other thought over here was, under continuation expectations, under number two, this is C2, and I'd like that, I think this should read more along the lines of, "Students who do not meet the program. Schools' magnet expectations may be at risk of being exited from the program or reassigned to their home schools if they cannot meet CCS promotion standards," that means being promoted to the next grade, "or they are unable to reach the magnet expectations after academic interventions that we discussed here in number A1, being in place for a period of time." And I'm not sure what that period of time is, maybe two quarters. And that would be my suggestion, change it for number two. And then my last philosophy change.
Wait.
Number, yes?
I just want to, did you all talk about this particular item?
No.
Okay. Go ahead, Rob.
Okay, and then my last one is under numbered four. I would like to strike the entire first sentence and the entire last sentence, and the reason for that being, and that goes back to policy 4150, is here, we're putting the burden on the families here. We ought to have an expectation that if the family wants to participate in this program, that child is going to want to remain in that program. I mean, here we say, "If you failed to return a form, we're going to kick you out of the school." That's not, that's not right. I think we have a policy, if we went, go back over to 4150, and add something under number C2 that talks about magnet school program leading, we just add something that says, you know, "If the student wishes to leave the magnet school and go back to the home school, that student should, you know, submit the request by a certain date, say December 1st, or as long as they meet the conditions in section E of that policy, which goes over the different reasons why you'd want to move." I think that is a much better approach than to put the burden on the family every year. I understand we want these expectations to be communicated, and we've done a better job of that in this policy of doing that. You know, again, I'm just, this is a philosophy difference that I have with the policy, and then going into the criteria, you know, the use of the EOG score. Go ahead.
We did talk a little bit about this at the policy committee. Ms. Smith, because she's part of the department that takes the applications and deals with a lot of these intent forms, the reason she's going to speak is because there's a history here, right?
What prompts this history is our parents are not aware of the number of seats available. And every year, we have some families that choose to go back to their home schools, and that's why this step was placed in there, so that when we opened the applications in January, a family will realistically see that we may not have 45 seats for a grade level, we may only have two. And the response we've gotten back from families over the past year is how much they appreciate it. One, knowing their chances of being in a program. The second part, we would hear from them, it seems really odd that we would be applying for a program where there are so few seats. But, so we've heard it both ways. And again, what we had by families saying they weren't coming back, if we didn't get that note, then they kept changing their minds, and we never had a real accurate seat count. And this became a bigger issue as we moved on from elementary, actually, middle and high school. So we needed to know seats, and that's ultimately why we did that in December, prior to opening the application season in January.
So if we carry this out, and let me just have the floor for a minute, if we carry this out a few steps farther, because we have an IB program at Weddington Hills, and we have two STEM schools, Coltrane Web and Patriots, and they're going to feed into J. and Freez, and we could literally outpace the, have more population wanting to go to Freez, I mean, going, yeah, going to J. and Freez than what we have seats for, then we would need this intent form by the 31st so that you could ascertain how many seats you have available to you. Do we have that same situation going from Freez to Central? And do we, and we have limited number of seats in Central, that Freez could literally, we could literally only select a certain number of students out of Freez, and some would have to go to their home schools when they graduate from Freez? Do we have that situation? Because, I mean, what I see this intent form is, it's literally trying to make sure that you have enough seats available, and everybody's aware of what could happen in the selection process.
Okay, so to recap the intention of the policy, the intention of the policy is to have an intention window, which is the month of December. Are you coming back, yes or no? So we can have a good idea of how many spaces and seats are available. Then you have your application window in January. So December, if you're in the program, hey, are you coming back, yes or no? We got to kind of know how many seats we have, so we can communicate to those who want to get in, what their chances are of getting in. Then January launches the application window. Okay, I want to go to one of these magnet programs. So that's kind of the background there. To answer your question about the pipeline, we did say, when we opened Patriots as a STEM school, that two, maybe three years from now, we might have a bubble in that pipeline of students that will over-capacitate J. and Freez. So that's why we've had conversations with the board and with the construction committee about moving the PLC, so that we could expand the number of seats available at J. and Freez Middle School. You know, in talking to the administration at Patriots in particular, they're not seeing a high, and again, we only have, you know, one year of data, but, you know, their projection is that less than, what did he say, 60%? Less than, let's say 50%, I'll get you a more accurate number, of the fifth graders leaving Patriots will actually go to J. and Freez. So we don't anticipate having to turn anyone away in the next two years, because a lot of the kids at Patriots in fifth grade are very happy going to Hickory Ridge Middle School. So they, you know, they have, they're going to Hickory Ridge, and then they're going to go to Hickory Ridge High School. So that, they're not all coming to J. and Freez, is my point. Coltrane Web historically is about 55%. 55% of the fifth graders at Coltrane Web are going to go on into J. and Freez. Of course, that's a much smaller cohort, you only have about 80 fifth graders there. So 55% of that's about 40, 45 kids. So I don't foresee a bubble in the pipeline for the next two years. This coming year, 15, 16, and then 16, 17, I think we're safe. Going forward, I still think we would be prudent for the board to find ways to move the PLC to another location, expand J. and Freez to 800 kids, and I think you're set. You don't have to worry. Does that help?
Yes, and basically, if we didn't do that, then this intent to return form would be much more important.
Absolutely.
Because it would help you project what your numbers are, so that when you do the application process, you know who's going to remain.
Exactly, yeah. And it's important now, to the extent that, if I'm a parent and I want to get into the seventh grade STEM, right, and I'm not in it now, I'd kind of like to know what my chances are. Is this a 1 in 100 shot, or is this a 1 in 2 shot, because of how many spaces are available? And a lot of times, inevitably, you know, we'll say, "Well, we only got seven spots." So that helps them manage their own expectations as a family, to kind of know, is this likely or is this not likely? And I think we owe that to the families.
Probably the best time to do that is this week, when we promote our magnet school. And we'd have no idea what that number, I mean, I don't know, you know, that number comes to you way, you know, February, January, or whatever it is.
Well, with this policy, it would come to us at the end of December. That's why we have the intention window in December, then application window launches in January, we'd have that knowledge, and we'd post that and make that publicly available in January.
So what can we do in response to the concern that, you know, we put a call out for you to complete a form, and then at the end of the month, you find out that you thought you completed the form, and you sent it by your child, and your child never, you know, what can we put in place to keep a piece of paper from driving that?
The schools actually this past year followed up on every single one that they did not receive. A call was made to the parents to say, "We have not received it." And that extra effort on part of the schools really made a difference in the return rate.
So parents won't find out in January, "I thought I turned that in, but I didn't."
It's fully communicated in December.
All right, Mr. Powell, you have your mic on.
I think we do something very similar with bus ridership forms. We stress the importance of those, but we don't exclude them from writing because they don't get the form in. I agree with the window, because we need to know the seats. I just, am I reading it, am I understanding you correctly, that we just need to take the teeth out of the consequences for not returning the form?
The teeth are, my suggestion would be, the burden shouldn't be on everybody, it should be on those that don't want to participate. They have a certain timetable, they need to let us know, so we have an idea of who's not, who doesn't want to be in that program anymore.
I actually think we could answer that question, the intent includes both options. I plan to return or I do not plan to return. So that way, that's how we know that.
So did we hope to implement this policy beginning spring of 2015? Was the expectation of bringing this before the board so that it would be implemented for spring of 2015 in the current pipeline of?
Absolutely, because intent letters were prepared today.
So I kind of guess my question, and I don't mean to misrepresent anything or get too, you know, boil it down way too much, but is this policy, as it is written now, good enough that we, in theory, could vote on it next Monday night with these changes considered in the January or February review cycle? Mr. Walter, I guess, I want to put it to your preference, or should we, in effect, table this policy again, so that it would not be applicable to spring of 2015, and we would, in effect, be using and working under the same previous regime as we had? I mean, we're here in December. I mean, we're, we're here in December. What do we got to do to, to move forward, to have a better approach to admissions into the magnet?
I think this policy is a much better improvement, if things are as they are. But again, I've got philosophy changes. I don't think it's the way we're operating the middle school program, per se, is, is the best philosophy to be going forward with. That's...
And so my question is...
If you're, as the way our things are today, this, this improves what we're doing. We are giving notice to folks. They understand what these expectations are, and that's a good thing. And we're, we have a intervention program that we're going to put into place, to make sure that those that are struggling know that they're struggling, and they get some extra help. So those are all good things that were not in place before.
All right.
And maybe I need to ask Ms. Carpenter as well, what...
We don't have this in place. It wouldn't be in place if we don't, oh, excuse me. We don't have it in place, and if we don't approve this, it won't be in place. And if we, so we need to get this approved, so it'd be in place for this coming year. So we would need to get this approved, because we, we don't have this, and I think this is, we can always tweak it, once we get it in place, and make some minor adjustments, but, you know, as Chris mentioned, after y'all left that meeting, our policy board was under the understanding, we only had one minor adjustment we needed to make, and I would much rather see us bring it back to them, if we were going to make some other major adjustments to it. I would rather us go ahead and approve it on the whole, and then if we need to bring it back to make some minor, you know, other adjustments, but that way, we would get the, the big part of it approved, and then bring it back, is what I would rather do.
It just seems like our magnet programs need what guidance we can give them now, so that they can act in twenty, in January of twenty, between now and January twenty fifteen, and that in January and February, and however long it takes to consider these additional concerns, we can get that so that it is in place, and makes the process beginning summer, and, well, summer of twenty fifteen, for the twenty fifteen, sixteen year, more doable. But I don't, I don't want to supersede what Mr. Walter was just trying to get at, because it's certainly valid, many points are, were certainly worthy of consideration. But we got to do something soon, so we can move forward with the STEM program.
Let me intervene here for a second. There were two insertions that you were trying to get in, which the board, the policy committee had not discussed. And so, you know, I think we're spending a lot of time on some philosophical, that I think needs further discussion, and I think we can revise this policy. It's not like it's a frozen policy, and we can do that later on. But there seemed like there was one disagreement in philosophy, and that was over this magnet expectations agreement. Is that the one that seemed to be the most contentious item? That you thought that the board needed to approve that, Mr. Walter?
That, that's the one that we left the meeting with, the board representation disagreeing. So we needed for, the board has, as the seven, have to decide which one we're going to do.
So what I'm suggesting is, we approve the policy, and we work out this particular philosophical argument on the, on the magnet expectations agreement, and then everything else will be for something in the future, because they do need to have some guidelines going in, because we've got January coming up. We, this is the first reading. We, we approve, if we do approve this at our next meeting, which will be the business meeting next week, then we have to have the second reading in January, and it won't become the rule of policy until middle of January. And so you're asking us to get into some philosophical, that I believe that this group needs to be a part of, before we go accept those changes.
Well, I, I was, I, are, are you saying that Rob's suggestion of the expectations being approved by the board be voted on next week by our board, or that it be sent back to the committee? Because it sounds like that particular thing has already been discussed by the committee, they just couldn't come to an agreement.
Right. I'm saying, the only thing that we're talking about is the magnet expectations agreement that we will put on the action item agenda for, action items for next week. But Rob had two insertions. He had an insertion at, between B two and B three, and then an insertion at C two. And those were wordings and philosophicals that this board, or this policy group, had not had a discussion over. And I think that that's, that deviates, because that means that Mrs. Carpenter and, and Mr. Harrison did not have a chance to weigh in, and neither did the rest of the, the policy committee. And I think that that would be, we would be remiss to allow that.
I think we're going back and, back and forth. The policy committee doesn't want to discuss the philosophical points. That's up to us, as a board, to determine. That's the issue, why it keeps going back and forth. What do we believe? What, do we want to look at this? Should we have, you know, should we be using just EOGs for, for, EOGs for English and math at our STEM schools? Should we not take, we don't take into consideration science scores? Should we do this? Those are all...
Excuse me. The, I just want to interrupt you, because you're, you're missing what I'm saying. C, B two, and the insertion, and C two insertion are completely new wordings that you wanted. We're talking, we only want to talk about the magnet expectations agreement, which you said, basically, inside the magnet expectations agreement is the criteria that each parent will sign. It's the contract that says, these are the criteria that they're going to be approved for advancement in this program. Is that correct? And so that's what this board has to come to grips with. Now, what Mr. Walter's suggesting is, that this board will approve that document for each level, and the policy committee, or others in the college, policy committee, Mr. Harrison included, agree that it should be taken care of by the administration of those particular schools. They will develop the contract. The parents will sign that contract and go forward. This board will not be actually involved in...
But somebody in this office, in other words, the superintendent's designee, would still approve that. So the school wouldn't just do that on their own, it would be sent here. Essentially, that would be the curriculum department. The curriculum department would say, yes, we're good with these guidelines. Those would be visible to the board anytime we want them, but that, that department would ultimately say, yes, I'm good with these. That would not be a board-level decision. One board member said it should be a board decision, and one said, I don't think that's our job, leave that to the department.
So what I submit to you, board members, is, when we come to this discussion on, well, we can either talk about it tonight, or y'all can think about it, and we'll have a discussion on this on Monday. Do you want the meet expectations agreement to be either, one, developed and approved by the administration, or, two, developed, given to us, and then we have the final approval for all the details within? And so it's, it's either on us or on them. And that's, that's the decision that we have to philosophically decide on next week.
I think it should be developed by them, but approved by us. I don't, I don't think developing it is, is our role. But I do think that if they're going to grieve this process, it comes to us. So to, to kind of hide behind the fact that we didn't create it, when they grieve the process, to us, I think is, is not appropriate. I think that if we need to have our hand in it, if they're going to, if something goes wrong, and they don't agree with it, and they grieve it to us, then we need to say, okay, well, let's stand by our policy. So, and also, I think the wording, it says here, let me go back to it. Each magnet schools, program schools, magnet expectation shall be approved annually by the superintendent or designee. I think that should be, and created by superintendent, designee, with board approval, but it should also be expectations and continuation expectations, or make sure it's not just entry, it's admission and continuation. I think maybe that could all be included in one document? Am I missing something? Is that here?
Yeah, and that, that is, if you look at number one, the magnet expectation shall be an integral part of student enrollment and continuation. So we did talk about it, I mean, that is part of that agreement, to do both.
So enrollment and, and continuation? Okay.
Yes, and we were, because there were several concerns in that. That's definitely something that the whole group agreed, yes, we should do that, and notify them, how you get in, and how you stay in.
Yep. I, I think that if, for some reason, a student wants to manipulate the system to try to gain entry to a magnet program for other reasons than the magnet program, for example, athletics, and they manipulate this system to do that, then we need to have our hand in it. I think we need to provide that oversight. That's just my opinion.
Can I ask one question, then, Mr. Chairman, sir?
Yes, sir.
Right now, if you do not meet expectations, and do you, are you sent back to your home school? Is it always done? I mean, so far, have we?
Ask your expectation.
Yeah, but did, did we not have students at some, at, at particular high schools, that they went there for a program, and, and got to stay when they didn't meet expectations? That was a principal's decision?
No.
Not true?
Since, since they opened, if they didn't meet the expectation, they were returned to their home school.
But, 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 but the, the only schools where we have continuation criteria that, where students are rejected, is, is the STEM and the IB programs at middle school. The high school continuation criteria are, you know, did you show up?
That's, that's true.
It's not...
That's not correct.
That's not the information we were provided, when we talked about this a month or two months ago. There were, there were no students that were rejected out of high school. None.
That's not correct. Central Cabarrus and...
Then you better go back and check the data that you showed us a month or two ago, because that's not what I remember at all.
Well, both high, high schools, since they opened, have sent students back.
Since they opened. I'm talking about this past year.
Oh, this pa, every year? This is the fourth, is this fourth year of Central Cabarrus? And this is the, this is the third year. Next year will be the fourth year. So since that opened up with that program, and they, they take a hundred students in, each year, they have sent students back to their home school for not performing to the expectations, per the principals at both of those high schools.
All right, but there, there is no, as I understood, there, there was no, there's no EOG criteria? There's no written grading criteria?
Well, there's not a EOG criteria, because there's not an EOG at high school. So the criteria is a little different, but in, in K eight, EOG is an end-of-grade cumulative test. In high school, they don't take an end-of-grade cumulative test. So there, there are some differences, which is one of the reasons that we were saying we should have a, a different agreement per school, because you can't compare Central Cabarrus to Patriots, because they're going to take a fourth grade EOG. At the end of first semester of their ninth grade, they're not going to necessarily have an EOG, and that's when they would make the decision to send them back, usually at Central Cabarrus and Concord High. If you have Ds in all of your classes, or you failed two of your classes, you may not have been in an end-of-course test, or had any of those tests, but they still will say, you're not meeting the criteria, and they have to return to their home school. And, and that has happened every semester since they've opened.
All right, well, I, I'd request that we be providing more information on that, because that certainly doesn't fit with what I, I've read before. That, that, that's just not what I heard.
It is hard to compare, though, an elementary EOG to the test that you take in high school. Elementary and middle are more similar, even though they're a little different, but high school is a very different criteria, which is, again, why we said, each school probably has to set the criteria, because IB's criteria is different at high school than STEM, and IB's high school is different than IB elementary. And so all of these kind of have their own identity, which is why they write the...
It's a reason why this board ought to review those things.
Yeah, I'm kind of like, Mr. Powell, I think they should come up with it, but we need to review it. Just my opinion.
So you're going to have about six or seven of these different meeting expectations, because you'll have the middle years, primary years, and diploma for the IB, and then you'll have, I guess...
STEM.
Three, three levels of STEM.
And then you have early college, and then you have PLC, again, different criteria, not really comparable in many ways, which is why we were saying, you know, individual schools. And again, the committee, for all the reasons you guys said, have said, yeah, this is something that you could say, board or not board, and our two board members disagreed, and so we said, the board will tell us what to do.
All right, so, next week, friends, we will have this discussion one more time, and I think we will resolve it.
Well, I, I have two more things I want to bring up. First of all, is in, in C three, it says, principals shall notify all students and parents in writing twice a year, or course, whether the student is continuing to meet the magnet expectations, and it shall be given at the fifty percent mark, and then at the seventy-five percent mark. If the magnet expectations are an EOG score, you don't know that at the fifty percent mark.
That's right.
So this is not compatible with saying that we're going to use EOG scores. So I'm fine with not using EOG scores, but is that really your intent?
So I want, I want you to remember that there's multiple prongs to staying in the program, okay? So EOGs is the first prong. If you are on grade level, you're reading on grade level, and you're doing math on grade level, you stay in the pipeline. But if you're not on grade level, okay, we don't want a test, we don't want one day in the life of a child to determine whether you stay in a program. So starting in fifth grade up, rising sixth grade through rising ninth grade. Elementary, elementary. You, you stay, regardless, we don't kick anyone out, elementary. Rising sixth grade through ninth grade. If you fail an EOG, the program requirements state that you have to have, and we've changed this since, but previously, seventy-seven average or higher, so a C or higher, and your teacher recommendations are, on a Likert scale, one to five, you have an average of a three. So not, we're not asking for the moon, but basically, we're saying, if you have this qualitative data that says, hey, you know what, you're a hard-working student, you're getting some good grades, your teachers say, wow, this, this kid is really putting forth the effort, that EOG score doesn't really justify with the other data that we know about this kid, then they stay in the program. So that's the magnet criteria that is, that a principal's going to communicate to those families twice a year, and say, okay, guys, just want you to know, here's where you stand in the program, here's your grades, you know, you're, you're, you're meeting the mark on your grades, teachers are saying, yes, good job, comments are good, you're, you're doing your thing. We have every expectation, you're going to pass your EOG. But if you don't pass your EOG, here's how you can stay in the program and still fail your EOG. So those are the criterias that we, that we've looked at. That's what would be communicated to families, so.
I'll just philosophically ask, why do we even need to consider the EOGs in this whole magnet thing? Why can't we just bypass the EOGs altogether, as not related, as a criteria? But that's a philosophical thing, too. But I think we're far off of the intent of passing a policy that the system can work on in the next few weeks. And I'm not sure what we can resolve with these discussions.
Did you desire an answer?
So often, I'm just very rhetorical, no, no, sir, I don't always desire, desire an answer to that.
I will say, that is a, a very good question to ask, and you, you do, we do need to discuss that, and you need to hear the rationale behind an EOG. So you know me, I'm, I'm, it is what, data is what it is, it's a point in time, it does give us some information about students' progress towards our end-of-grade.
EOG out tomorrow, younger ladies in magnet schools, what harm do we have to do to resolve so many of these questions? But that's again...
Yeah, we'll, we'll have that discussion maybe next week, yeah.
All right, Dr. Phillips, you had one more?
I have one more, that I, probably this will be the last comment. In C four, it's very nice to know that it looks like we're going to have plenty of space for rising fifth graders, but I still think we need to put the caveat in, that if, you know, they're automatically eligible, but if there are too many students applying for a limited number of seats, there will be a lottery. In other words, you're eligible, but it doesn't guarantee that you're going to be admitted.
Five starts talking about the lottery, because we did, as a committee, discuss the exact point that you're saying. There is going to come a point, we hope that there doesn't, but there probably is going to come a point, over time, whether that's two years or four years, where there's not going to be a seat, and that'll have to go to a lottery, per our attorney, to say, that's the only, the only legal way to choose people, if we have more interested than we have seats for.
I, I agree, but number five says if they are going to a different...
Oh, I'm sorry.
...program. And, and so this is, I'm in IB, I want to continue in IB, you know, for now, it looks good, but there could come a day, and I'd rather us be proactive and just say...
Does that go back to, that goes back to section B, though, for procedure for admission into that new school, isn't it? For fifth grade, eighth grade?
That's it, isn't it?
And that particular statement arose from a parent contacting me, because her son was in one program, applied for another program, and was taken out of the first program, which was not the intent of the policy, I think. So number five there was supposed to, to clarify that situation, so that, what should have happened is that that parent's, that child should have stayed in the program until admission into the, the second. So I see where you're going, but...
But I just want to make sure I understand, because, Mr. Harrison, we did talk about the individual parent in that situation. I thought you were... I thought you were talking about B, number five, C, which goes all the way down to students who are not admitted during the application period shall be placed on a waiting list in the order determined by a randomized lottery. Right? So, I think both of those are addressed through the two issues there.
I think, though, to address Dr. Phillips's point, I think in paragraph four, where we say automatically be eligible, I think it may be more precise to say automatically be qualified to attend, and then, then when you go up to who the qualified applicants are in five, it says if there's space, all qualified applicants go, if there's not space, you have the lottery of the qualified applicants. Is that what we're talking about? I see Jason cringing, so maybe that's, maybe I'm misinterpreting.
The problem with that is qualified, you're, you can be qualified out of the pipeline. You know, we want to give priority to anyone in the pipeline, so I'd be careful about that. That's why we use the, like, to Dr. Phillips's point, I think, if you're in the pipeline and you don't have space, you get first dibs through a lottery process.
It's almost like in B, five, there needs to be a C1 and a C2. The C1 is everybody that has been in the pipeline, if there's not enough space for everybody that's in the pipeline to go on, we have a special lottery for them, but, and then if there is enough space, then we have a lottery for the ones that are outside the pipeline that want to get in.
And we definitely discussed that at the policy committee and thought we wrote the policy for it, but if we need to look at breaking up C1 into C1 and C2, we'll revisit that, because you're right, and it was definitely something that we discussed. I thought we addressed it, but maybe we didn't. So, the revision would be in five, C, break it out, people who are in the pipeline and people who aren't, one and two, and we'll talk to Mark and Sarah about revising those two paragraphs.
Will you make a revision on C-4 to change that word automatically, or are you going to go with that?
Well, Mark's suggestion was to go from eligible to qualified, and then Jason was saying maybe that we shouldn't go there. And then, do we address that in five, C1 and two when we break those out?
I'll work with Sarah on the language. I think we're all in agreement that we want, essentially, if you're in the pipeline, you get priority over people that are not in the pipeline.
That's right.
And Dr. Phillips's concern is, this, as worded, could be interpreted to mean you're guaranteed a spot, and you're saying, at some point, we may not be able to guarantee a spot.
Right.
You may get a priority lottery, but it's not automatically guaranteed spot. So, we may want to massage that language a little bit, but I'll work on that. All right, board members, this will come back to us next week with changes, and we will have another discussion. Hopefully, it will be a little less verbose, but we'll, the other thing is, is this policy will come back to us again, because there will be...
Jason just asked to make sure, at this point, you guys are not expecting the magnet criteria per school yet, correct?
Well, that was, I was just getting ready to say that. I said, this policy will come back to us, and it will have referenced each one of those meeting expectations criterias for all of the different levels of magnet schools.
But we already have...
No, 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 it won't be next week, but I'm saying, eventually, that will have to be added to this policy, so that we will know, and y'all will have to tell us...
We already have those criteria, though.
Aren't there current criteria?
Yeah, there's current criteria.
Can we just get a copy of what's now, and then look at...
All right, so, well, you'll need to make documents out of them, because they'll only be referenced in this document.
Yeah, so, yes, there are current criteria, but what we haven't done is discuss with the schools, all of the new policy, or all the things that we say, look, these are all the things we want to make sure you have, and spell all those out enough that it's there and it's available on their website. And so, we have not sat down with all of those six or seven different kind of elementary, middle, high magnets to say, here's all the things you've got to do, but is there basic criteria available, but it may not have everything we have in the policy, because they're not aware of the policy, because it's not a policy yet.
I think that would be valuable, to know what we've been working on currently, and to know the diversity that has been in the policies, and so, maybe that's a good argument in and of itself to tighten things up.
Well, I think...
So, please don't change them, let's have them like they are.
I think what we should do, Vince, is just have them come back with the policies in the written format, and we'll have them for first reading. And we won't be spending a lot of time trying to hash out why they're different, because we're trying to get the consistency of the policies. We don't need to know what's wrong with them now, we want to know what's right, and that's all we should be as a board. This is what we're going to be judging it by from here on out. So, then, when they bring us the new policies, which, I mean, the new meeting expectations as documents, and we'll review them for the first time, the policy committee will have a chance to look at them before they come to us, which I think is only fair, they will get them, and they will come to us as documents for the first reading, that's when we will go through them and see them in detail, and then they'll come to us again for second reading, and we'll approve them, and they'll be a part of this policy. Because now, we are actually saying that the board wants to see what the new criteria is, and that has to be called out in this policy. Don't you agree, Mark?
I'm actually not, not sure I do. If I understood Mr. Walters' proposed change to A2, he would say that the board shall approve the magnet expectation. So, I guess I envisioned, if that were the language of A2, then you would have a presentation on, these are the magnet expectations, kind of like you review school improvement plans, where you would get, here are the magnet expectations for the seven magnet schools, and the board would review and approve those. I don't think you'd be adopting it as a policy, because those may change from time to time. You would be, if you make the change Mr. Walters is suggesting, though, you would basically be saying, every year, we need to review and approve magnet expectations, like we would review school improvement plans or other things that get presented annually for the board to review. And then, you'd say, okay, here are the magnet expectations, the board would vote on those or send them back for revision, you know, and you'd be doing that every year, if that's what you want to do in A2. But again, I don't think you'd be adopting new, a new policy every year, you would simply be approving expectations.
But the expectation still will have to come through this group, the curriculum group and the schools, they will have to develop these expectations and then deliver us all of the expectations at one time.
I agree, but I don't think it would go to the policy committee. I think it would just come to the board, they would say, we developed, we've developed the 2015, 2016 magnet expectations, and here they are for approval by the board, and then the board would, you know, would vote those.
Would it be appropriate, since you mentioned school improvement plan, would it be appropriate to include these expectations in the school improvement plan, since it comes to us anyway?
Submitting it at the same time?
I would think that we do it separately, that way, we get information about how many students are in these programs, and get a presentation on how the magnet programs are going.
Yep, I agree.
So, school improvement.
All right, board members, are we sufficiently confused?
Is it your school improvement?
Yeah. All right, so, let us move forward, that is on the action agenda, and now we've got policies for the second reading.
That's right.
More fun.
And I did not get any questions on these, just editorial comments, so...
So, board members, you've had a chance to, well, some of us have had a chance to see these twice. I will ask our two new board members if you have any questions about the policies that are available for second reading.
Absolutely not.
Mr. Powell? All right, board members, can we put this on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Wonderful. Okay, that's a big win. All right, now we have the renewal of the computer lease, Ms. Probst. Ms. Burns, thank you for your patience.
It's always fun. Hi there. I'm just going to start with the financial aspects of it, and if you have technical questions, then I'll hand it over to Dr. Probst. So, we're bringing to you the annual computer lease that we bring to you every year, and I'm going to try to explain the lease a different way this year. We have, for our new board members and those who are revisiting us. So, our computer lease, we have a million dollars budgeted, the county has those dollars allocated to us, and we're not asking for additional dollars, and we use a third of that budget every year for a new lease, but we constantly roll that lease. So, it's like having children in college for a three-year period over and over and over. It's like when you get one child out of college, you just put one more child in college. So, it's a different set of children that's going through the lease, so we have different set of computers going through the lease, and we just constantly renew and roll that lease. So, that's how the dollars work. This lease, again, we have a million dollars budgeted, but this particular lease would be $324,952 for the first year. Of course, that's going to be for three years. The interest cost, the associated lease cost, is only $4,360, that's over three years, so that's an excellent rate, can't get a better rate than that. So, our total cost for this purchase is $974,856, and then these devices are going to schools that are older than six years, that have devices that are older than six years. Those are Bethel, Beverly Hills, Coltrun Web, Cox Mill Elementary, R. Brown, Mount Pleasant, Rocky River, and Weddington Hills.
Okay. Mr. Fur?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Harrison?
Hopefully, a quick question. Million-dollar lease, $324,000 every year. There is approximately $25,000 split three ways, I think, that is not accounted for here. What happens to that approximately $7,500 and something dollar a year? Where does it go?
Well, it is accounted for, because last year, we spent $353,000. So, we don't, we don't spend exactly $333,000, $333,000 every year. It ebbs and flows just a little bit.
It's a cushion, if nothing else.
It's just, you know, depending on what we spent last year determines how much money we have available to spend this year, so it's just...
We allocate a million dollars toward PCs and computers and technology, period. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Walter?
We had 1,100, well, 1,000, over 1,000 computers last year, and we only have 900 this year. Why the difference?
The difference is the type of computer. This is a lease for the elementary schools, and they are Macs, and they are, they run about $100 to $150 more expensive a machine. I will tell you the ROI on the machine, those machines that we have now are lasting six, seven, eight years. Some of our Macs are going on their ninth year. Not that we'd like to be keeping them that old, but we do to be able to make do. Last year's Dell lease, we also ventured in the Chrome world in that lease. We had a combination of desktops, laptops, the E3330s, and then we did some Chromes, and that's why we had the price points we did.
Okay. The other issue that I see is a million dollars doesn't really give us anywhere close to the one-to-one that we want to target, eventually target.
Thank you.
Do you have a...
Thank you for saying that, Mr. Walters. The county has given us a million dollars since 2002. Since that time, we've added 12 schools. We have 30-some thousand students and 4,500 workers, that most of them need computers to do their jobs. When you're only replacing 900 a year, that does not go very far. I'd like to say I'm very thankful for our PTOs and all the fundraisers our schools have to help us get additional devices.
But we have, what, 18,000, or is it more than that now?
We have 27,000 computers, we have 4,000 iPads, and that's a lot of devices. I will tell you, at this point, we are concerned, over 11,000 of those devices are on years six, seven, and eight. And where it's starting to cause issues, yes, the students can get their hands on them, but they're slow, and obviously, you get more break fix at that time.
So, here, we're trying to teach cutting-edge technology, and we don't have the cutting-edge technology to teach them, that's problematic.
Yes, and you will be seeing this at budget request time.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Powell? No questions? Ms. Carr, Ms. Walker? I mean...
Can I change my name now?
Can you change your name?
I'm the only female I'm hearing you, you don't even know my name. Question, aren't we still required to have our testing by 2015 online? Is that, or have they changed that date?
Yes, ma'am. And when we, about two years ago, when we went down this route, we were looking at a testing window that was much longer, and we were going to have multiple test sessions a day. We were going to try to have one to two test sessions a day. Now, we're finding that we've got to have test sessions, we can only do one a day because of the timing requirement. In addition to that, there are more online tests than what they predicted back in 2014. So, we are going to have issues if we get more devices, not only with the testing, but I will also say for Jason's, and he's walked out of the room, blended learning. It's an area where we need to get more devices.
And, well, you know, this has always been back in my mind, and that's why I was wondering why, and two, I mean, have we looked at different type of devices? But you mentioned looking at the different ones, why we always go with Mac or Apple, or why we stick with those type brands, and have we looked at the other things? And I think you mentioned, did you have?
Yes, ma'am. About three years ago, we did a massive study on standardization, and you've got to look at all components, the break fix, your training of your technicians, you've got to look at price points. I will tell you that we are going to Trigo, three devices, to see what a good recommendation would be for a one-to-one at the high school, and we'll do that in a week. But you've got to have standardization, and we are a Mac shop, Apple shop at the elementary level, and we are PC Windows, specifically Dell shop in the middle and high school. We like the fact that our students get to touch different devices during their K-12 experience. That said, I will tell you, we have ventured into the Chrome world, and we have moved some Chromes down to grades three, four, and five to see how we do then, do with that.
I can tell you firsthand, I was a, during the testing, I tested at the high school level, at the middle school, you know, for the EOGs, and seeing the children when they were testing on the computer, and when they were doing it by hand, it was amazing, the difference in the timing and how they tested, because it was like night and day. When they were doing it on the computer, it seemed like they did it so much faster. And it was, it was, it was like night and day when they did it on the computer, and it seemed like it went so much smoother, and I did it at all three levels, so it, and I really could tell a difference, though.
And we're trying to get our local testing online also, and think about the money it'll save in paper on the printing of those tests.
But it was, I saw, I saw quite, I saw, oh, wait a minute, here he comes, he, yes, yes, sir.
Since you mentioned online testing, not only the local testing, we're trying to do online with Discovery Ed. Harris Road Middle School did a pilot for the first quarter Discovery Ed benchmarking, where they did it all online. We were really doing it in preparation for the EOGs in the spring, because in the spring, all of the North Carolina final exams, those new state assessments, will be offered online, as well as additional EOGs at the middle school level. All of the EOCs are online and have been. So, we are now working with the schools to come up with a testing plan that will allow them to utilize as much of the online assessment components and opportunities as possible. However, we are still very much in need of devices in order to pull that off, to a large extent, in many of our schools.
It really, it was fascinating to me to see the difference, because I saw the ones that were doing it and the ones that were using the paper, and it was, it amazed me. I really did.
It is amazing, because I don't think that way, because I didn't grow up that way, but they've grown up that way. It's how they think, it's how they work.
And they did, and to see the different behavior with the students, and these, and it really wasn't, I mean, these students were on the same level, and it was, it was amazing.
It also has tools that allow us to be more efficient with our staff. There are a lot of small group settings that have to take place due to the individual accommodations that students need. With the online assessments, it allows us to put more students in a setting, for example, read aloud. You no longer have to have an adult who literally reads it aloud, the child has a pair of headphones, and it's read aloud through the computer. This also allows the student to go back and forth and not... This also allows the student to go back and forth and not have to kind of rely on when that teacher stops, that that's kind of it. They can go back and forth. They can request, but when you're a young child, it's maybe not that easy. Whereas on the computer, you can just push the buttons and do as you need.
We had some special accommodation ones in some of the groups also. And like you say, that worked very well also.
Very useful tool.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter.
Yes, Carpenter, Carpenter.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Phil, Dr. Phillips?
Okay, I've got a couple. So in the actual price quote from Apple, the row number two, it says three-year ARA for a hundred and forty-nine dollars each. What is that?
That is the actual three-year warranty. And Dr. Phillips, you and I talked about this. This issue, if you look at that, it adds up to like a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars if you also did the three-year warranty online for.
Uh huh, okay.
You've got to look at it and say, how much are you spending every year on break fix versus how much would the warranty be? Because at some point, you might not want to purchase that warranty. I will tell you, we're running about eight thousand dollars over of that warranty. So if you did it divided by three, it's close to forty-two thousand that we're spending if you had to put a dollar figure on what we send back to get fixed. At some point, as those machines get better and better and the students get more accustomed, because you don't get covered for accidental, I mean, you get covered for accidental, not for something on purpose, I think we might get to the point where we don't purchase the warranty. We don't purchase the warranty on a Chrome. It just doesn't make sense. Why would you purchase a warranty on a device that's three hundred and fifty dollars? So, but we watch that very closely to see at what point we're going to drop it.
Okay. Well, I'm glad to hear that it's not just based on a, oh, yeah, we always get the warranty, but that it's based on some real calculations to track whether it's worthwhile or not, so...
And it's a risk, because if we drop the warranty, then somehow on an operational budget, because I can't move these dollars over to operation, I'd have to make up the difference in the operational.
So that is something we may want to keep in mind for our future budget requests to the county is to say, can we have some flexibility to move some of that money to do in-house repairs rather than outsource it?
And I will say this, one of the things we've done in the last two years is, you know, we have a lot of Dell technicians, but we have paid for them to become Apple certified so they can fix both the Dell and the Apple machines.
At the North Carolina School Boards Association annual meeting that was last month, several of us went to a presentation by Moore County Schools, who followed the path now that has been blazed by the Mooresville City Schools of having one-to-one. And so they're slowly rolling it out. They're not doing it at all their schools at once, but they will over the course of three or four years. And one of the things that they are doing is they're actually getting their high school students who are heavily into IT to be trained on how to do routine fixes, like replacing cracked screens on Chromebooks. And I think that, that to me just sounded like a great idea because it reduces the schools' costs for repairs and it teaches the students a marketable skill.
I'm glad you brought that up. We're working on a partnership with Dell where they will actually come in and train and give certification to our high school students, and I like that.
All right. I have one question, and it's regarding sales tax. Come, 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 Ms. Clutz.
Yes, sir.
Now, you hear that if you buy through the county, you get sales tax back?
Right.
Is that what's going on? Is the county actually purchasing this for us?
No.
Or do, will we get the sales tax back?
So if we literally purchase through the county and the county holds title, then, and that's what the reason you're transferring title later, you're transferring title later on the Odell property is to maximize the sales tax refund. So we'll get the entire sales tax refund on that property, which is the seven percent. If we pay for it here, we only get the local portion. It's the different, we used to, years ago, get the entire, but it's the difference in the laws now. We only get the local portion. So the county, two or three years ago, used to hold this in their capital account and we paid the lease from the county. So we got the advantage of the seven percent sales tax refund. They did us a favor by moving it into our operating, and then they still gave us a million dollars. So they gave us a million dollars in our technology lease, and then they gave us a million dollars of capital, a good deal if you can get it right. But we did lose the advantage of, so we lost a net five percent sales tax by doing it that way. We still get the seven percent sales tax refund on the million dollars that we're going to send over there for those capital projects. So we didn't lose-lose. We just lose, we lost a little. Okay? So we still do get the local portion of that, but that goes into the general fund of the school system.
There's another piece to this, too. Government rate for education versus municipalities is different. So we get a far more competitive rate. It's the same reason we can't share licensing, like we can't share Microsoft licensing with the county, because their rate would be much higher than ours. So that's why we do the purchasing.
Okay, so it's just a double-edged sword. All right, board members? This is another consent item. Are we going to put this on the consent agenda? All right, let's move on. Resolution to close North Drive. Mr. David Burnett.
This is Mr. Burnett's third stop tonight. So Mount Pleasant.
Dave Staff Member.
Board Commissioners.
Mr. Dan Meehan, thank you for coming. Dave, go ahead.
All right. Thank you. And by the way, at the Mount Pleasant meeting tonight, things did go, I think, pretty well. There was a question and answer session, and it seemed to be very positive. There were a lot of people in attendance that appeared to be there in support of closing the drive. And that was, that was good. It wasn't a public hearing. It was just a question and answer for the board, but hopefully that gets the momentum that we need for the town to go ahead and schedule a public hearing so that this can get moving. So for you, and actually for the county, the county, that was the second stop. The county has this item also on their agenda, and they will need to schedule a public hearing as well. So I couldn't stay for that item. I needed to come here. Jonathan Marshall was handling that for us. And we do hope that, again, that the result of the meeting would be that they would schedule, get the ball rolling and schedule a public hearing. For you, what we're looking at is, we do have the resolution that's included. It's a very, you know, straightforward resolution. The school system owns the property on both sides of the road. It's about five hundred linear feet. We are looking to close the drive at Enchanted Lane and build a cul-de-sac so that if anybody needs to turn around, they certainly can. The, by the way, the property actually had, is now in the hand, in the name of the Cabarrus County. So you don't have to do anything with title change or anything on this project, on this property, but we are looking to get support, you know, for the effort, for the resolution. And the recommendation is that the board approve the resolution.
All right, board members, you have this document before you. Are we going to put this on the consent agenda? Are there any questions?
Can we put it on the action?
You want to put it on the action?
Just for somebody else who wants to make a comment on it, they have an opportunity next week to do so. The only thing I'd suggest here is to be a little more specific about what the area is approximately between, you know, those two drives. Where are they? I'd say approximately between Enchanted Lane and Main Street, five hundred feet on the first, where is close?
Could you change that?
Just to make it more understandable. We're not trying to close the entire road. It's just the portion where the school would go.
Okay, we'll put it on the action items for next week. And we have next on our agenda is the action, is the additional fund, project funds for the new Odell. Mr. Meehan?
I'll turn this over to Dave, too, and Ms. Clutz is going to back stuff. We have.
So this is a request from the Board of Education to the Board of County Commissioners. The history on this, certainly for the new board members, is the project has been underfunded. The schedule for the project is that we're trying to complete the project for a mid-year opening. And that would be a January, February opening, 2016. The project has been designed, it has been bid. The award amount is very competitive compared to similar projects in the region and in the state. Actually, it was less than all of the other projects in the region and the state on a square foot cost. On November 10th, the Board of Education approved the contract for the construction of the new Odell, grades three through five, elementary school. In doing so, the project still needs additional funding for construction, and basically it's project funds reimbursements. And that amount is about, it's eight hundred thirty-seven thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars. And to establish a construction contingency fund, because the project needs contingencies, it doesn't have it, an amount of three hundred seven thousand dollars. That totals one million one hundred forty-four thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars. So that is a request from the Board of Education to the County Commissioners. Now, the contingency amount, I will tell you, is a very frugal amount. It's very bare-bones amount. It is the absolute minimum. But that being said, the recommendation is for the Board to approve the funding request of the County Commissioners to provide additional funding in an amount of one million one hundred forty-four thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars.
All right, board members, starting with Mr. Powell. Do you have any comments? Ms. Carpenter?
You know I've always got comments. I've got two. Okay, now you're saying mid, opening it in January, basically, is what you're saying. And you're saying that it's, you're asking for an additional, what now, you're asking for an actually additional one million one hundred forty-four thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars. That's on top of the two million you've already asked for, correct?
That is correct.
All right. Now, if you, if you said, okay, no, we're going to wait and open it up, well, in my, I mean, if we waited to the, you know, what would that do? Would that make any difference?
Delay, six-month delay.
Well, so the Board has approved a contract with Beam Construction to go ahead and build the school. And they did that on November 10th. So that is, you know, that's, that is underway.
Okay.
So they will finish that construction fourteen months from now. So the building will be complete.
Okay.
But what we don't have is we need to replenish the project funds, the other accounts. You were able to award the contract by having a variety of accounts. But now we need to replenish that so that we make sure we have the furniture and equipment that we need, the startup funds that we need, those other expenses.
So you're still saying it won't make any difference for that, even for doing that? Now, does this amount, I know I've seen something talking about that geothermal thing, does that have, is that included? So that doesn't have anything to do with that? Or the lighting? So none of that's included in this other amount here?
You're correct. That is not included.
So that's not included in this amount here? So this other, so if we were going to cut something else, we would have to cut something, as you say, it would have to be cut out of something else, the furniture or equipment or something like that. So this one point, one million dollars more has got to come out of something else. And if we were going to cut, so instead of the two million dollars, really, we're saying Odell is three million dollars over then? Is that what you're telling me now?
I guess I would go back to the original request was in the neighborhood of nineteen and a half million dollars. What was funded was seventeen and a half million dollars. Even at the nineteen and a half million, looking at the construction costs, the square foot costs of the region and the state, that even that was low. So the additional funding is needed. What you're keeping is you're keeping the standard, the Cabarrus County School standard, and that's been the direction from the beginning.
Okay. But you're saying, still, open it, but still, that would give us open, I'm just going to make a statement right now. I'm not crazy about opening school mid-year. I mean, we could work out bugs and everything like that, even if the school is done, but I'm not crazy about moving kids halfway through the year. I mean, even if it's finished, we could, that would give us time to work things out, and I don't like moving children halfway during the year. Even if it is complete, like I said, that would give us time to work things out. So I'm putting my two cents worth in right now. But that's my questions. Thanks a lot.
Dr. Phillips?
Okay, I'm trying to understand where we, how we got to this spot. When we got the bids in, we knew that it was over the, way over the seventeen and a half million dollars that had been allocated. But then we said, well, why don't we value engineer it and try to get it down to at least the nineteen and a half million dollars, which was what we originally said we needed? Now, I know that we didn't get all the way down, but remind me, how much did we, what was the construction cost that was originally bid? And how much did we save in value engineering? And how much did we end up short of the nineteen and a half million or above the nineteen and a half million?
So the value engineering was reductions of two hundred thirty-nine thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars. So two thirty-nine, six ninety-four.
Right.
The original budget for construction is thirteen million five hundred forty thousand four hundred dollars. The revised budget, when you add, now, one point, two million dollars didn't actually go into the construction budget. One point seven million went into the construction budget. Three hundred thousand went to technology. So one point seven million was added to the construction budget. And so when you take the amount that was awarded November 10th and you deduct the available funds, what you come up with is a need for eight hundred thirty-seven thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars.
Now, there's one thing in this spreadsheet that I'm wondering where it came from. It says, in Architects, there's a ninety thousand dollar entry under Budget Amendments. Was that for the redesign to make it a three-five instead of a K-5?
That's mostly.
Yeah, it's mostly.
Ninety-five thousand, and whenever, right, it's not in, right.
Yeah, that actually, that actually was for designing the geothermal field.
Oh.
And there may have been some other things in there, but I'm pretty sure that that item was part of that.
Okay, because I thought there was something that we decided, well, we're just going to pay for that out of fund balance rather than ask, well, I think we asked Commissioners, they said, no. And so we said, okay, well, we'll just pay for it out of fund balance.
Yeah, and that's the ninety-five thousand dollars. That was a different item. Yes, and that's...
So is that out of here?
Well, what, what we did on that, we...
Or are we sneaking it back in?
Yeah, again, trying to be as frugal as possible, trying to limit the amount of, of the requests, you know, to the county. We did originally ask the county for reimbursement of $95,000, and they did turn that down. We were gonna go back again and ask, but, but really, Powell was able to find a way to, for the school system, to, to take on those funds as that need, instead of going back to the county.
It is not reflected in this document. That $95,000 is not reflected in this document, and the expense or the budget has been removed.
And when did we vote to spend $90,000 on geothermal?
No.
I don't remember doing that.
That was very early in the project.
I could, we could pull it.
That was done back in March, just about the time the contract was signed. It was when we were in the portion of negotiation, and we were trying to decide which way to go, so we put in there the design for the geothermal, so we would have that option available to us, and, and Dave is still pursuing private money for the geothermal option, which will save, especially if we can get it privately, it will save us a bunch of money over, you know, whoever...
Is it a budget, it's not a spin item, it's a budgeted item?
It was in the project, yeah. I don't, I don't remember, you know, you'll have to look it up.
Okay, well, I, I'm having a little bit of a hard burn, but again, you know, here we are dealing with a new, new Board of Commissioners. The, the previous Board allocated an additional $2 million, back giving us what we originally said we needed, and, and now we're gonna come back and say, no, actually, we need 1.1 million more. You know, if, if I was a Commissioners, I would like, okay, and then what are you gonna do in March, or April, or, you know? When, when do the requests for more money stop?
Well, there's, there's two items. Number one is contingency. Certainly, if the project hits a great deal of unsuitable soil, and it exhausts the contingency, we'll have to go back. And we can, of course, continue to try to value engineer the project, you know, to try to reduce that amount. The second item is the, is the roundabout on Highway 73. And so there has been some discussions and some, we won't say headway, but at least there's some possibilities that we've mentioned before of, of sharing of cost, but that's still, that's still a separate item. The county is very involved in those discussions, and, and we'll, we are continuing those discussions with the county and with NC DOT.
That's, that's all. I think Carolyn has something.
On the, yeah, I noticed we've got a lot of technic, you know, tech charges. I mean, we've got 600,000, then we had 300,000 for infrastructure, and then it says an additional 300,000. What all is that? Besides our regular equipment and furniture setup? And then we've got a regular startup.
Okay, so let's start with the infrastructure. That's gonna be all your cabling, all your, all your wiring, we're gonna do the phone system, all your data drops, right?
Okay.
And then on top of that, we're doing the security cameras.
Is that that additional 300?
It's all embedded. I can't say it's gonna cost 300,000 for security cameras, but out of the 1.2 million, this is what this covers.
Okay.
So your phones, your data, your security cameras. Then at that point, you go into hardware, which would be your devices, then you have your presentation stations, which would be like your smart boards or smart TVs, whatever we, the avenue we go there. Then you've got any type of major software licensing that we usually put in our startups.
How much of that is, is gonna be in the equipment and furniture? So you got almost 900,000 there?
Absolutely none. Equipment, furniture is more for like your desks, your bookcases, and things like that. So there's, it's totally separate.
Okay, what's included in startup?
So when you walk into school, on the first day of school, you gotta have a pencil sharpener, you gotta have the post-it notes, you gotta have all of those things that, that, you know...
So that supplies more, that's more, that's more the supplies, okay.
That you wouldn't capitalize. It's all those things that, that you take for granted that are there in a, in a normal school when you walk in, that's probably accumulated for the last several years, but are not there in a new school when you walk in.
Okay.
Those types of things. And I, the budget amendment that we talked about just a minute ago, it was approved on the ninth day of June 2014 for $90,000 to architecture.
And that was for geothermal?
That was for the geothermal. That is that 90,000.
I mean, was that, is that how it was stated in the...
Um, it, it says to reclass budget for known overages.
So it did say geothermal then?
Not in the description, no.
Okay. I think we should need to have clarification on that. For overages, you should have stated it was for geothermal. I'm a little disappointed in that.
I can pull the minutes to the meeting, but my guess is that we probably had that conversation, but I'm not positive of that, but I'll, I'll pull them for you.
I'd appreciate that.
Okay, Mr. Walters?
All right, so what is the, the total amount we're asking the county for? I mean, it's complete proj, project, how much is this?
So add the seven, the nineteen five to 1.1, so it's 20.6, whatever, let's go down.
20.6?
Does that include that too, from the mediation?
Yes, the 19.5 includes the mediation, so it's the 19.5 plus the 1.144372 for the total.
And that doesn't include this round, roundabout, which...
It does not include.
And what can that possibly run?
The, the estimates for the actual work was 1.2 million, but the expectation was that there is gonna be sharing of cost from multiple parties.
But still, we're gonna be hit for a good portion of that, so at least $21 million for the, the county needs to come up with the total funding.
Well, it could, it could be that the, the share for the Board on the roundabout might be in the neighborhood of 400,000. Hard, hard to say at this point.
But it's, it's gonna be at least the total cost here, it's 20, I mean, I just, I have a hard time putting my, you know, hands around it as well, 'cause we had this budget back, you know, back in last year, where we said it would be nineteen, about, 19.5 million. And then that was before we redesigned this school. And when we asked to redesign the school, one of the reasons I supported the redesign of the school was because we're saving, not only that we were saving 1.4 million, or something that, if I remember correctly, because we were not, first we were opening it in January, and then we were converting the three-fives, so it wasn't as large. So I don't see that savings in these, anywhere in these numbers.
So the savings were, were twofold. There were two components to the savings. One was that the square footage was being reduced by not having the kindergarten first grade wing, with all those classrooms having bathrooms in them. So there were savings there. The second thing was the schedule, construction schedule was becoming compressed, and that was the other component, that was the other savings to, to the job. So if you compress the construction schedule, you will pay more, you know...
And I remember you, I remember you expl, I remember you explaining all that. That's, that's where I'm just looking for where, where was that from the 19 million? How did that, it didn't lower the 19 million any, any?
So, so the completion date, so the, 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 the direction was to go ahead and redesign, and that the, that the construction schedule was now looking at a mid-opening, mid-year opening. So we weren't compressing the schedule. So the, now that the bids that were received, I think we're in the neighborhood of $173 a square foot. When you look at comparable projects, you'll see that they cost more than that. In North Carolina, in 2013, when you compare that, when you make that in today's dollars, I think that one project was $246 a square foot, and another project was in the neighborhood of $184, $186 a square foot. Ours is $173 a square foot, and ours also includes some off-site costs, which usually the other numbers won't have that. When you, when we report the cost, we try to take out off-site costs. Ours, $173, does reflect some off-site costs. The Odell School Road improvements are in that, are in that price.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's just difficult for me to understand, 'cause I mean, we're here, we're even using our property that we already own. We're not going out and buying a whole lot more. We had a small acquisition, but it wasn't anything substantial. Just a lot, it's, it just is a high dollar. I know we have to move forward with it, but it's, I'm just not comfortable with going to the county, like was said earlier, we're gonna go in there asking, and then we're asking, well, coming up, we're gonna be asking you again. It'd be much nicer to, at least if we're gonna ask, just ask for the, what we think it's gonna be. That's, those are my comments on this.
Mr. Harrison?
There is nothing profound or insightful about this comment, but, and we all know it. The watchwords that this Board needs to adhere to in our relationship with the new County Commissioners are transparency and giving them a heads-up. Transparency and giving them advance notice of these needs. There's, that everybody here knows that, and that's not an accusation or any kind of innuendo at all, but we have got to maintain, or in effect, reestablish a good rapport with the new County Commission. And so all we can do, all we can humanly imagine to do, to be transparent and to give them advance notice of these expenses, will go a long, long way to actually obtaining the resources that the county entrusts this Board to manage and be the stewards of. I'll stop there, but I think, I hope we all agree on that, and I think that's where we need to go strictly, absolutely diligently, in, in a very disciplined way, going forward to give the county all the heads-up we can, and to be as absolutely transparent as we can. Thanks. And again, thank you for all your great work.
Mr. Farr?
Yeah, on the, what was the last elementary school we built? Was it Patriots?
It's Patriots and A.T. Allen.
Okay, and how much did that cost? Anybody remember? Okay, do you remember? Okay. I was just wanting to see what the difference was, is right now, you know, with the, with the 20.6 made, and we're getting from the county with the, for grades three through five, what did it cost for K through five? I'm just curious to know. I know, I know what's the difference, it's five or six years later, but, and I'm gonna tell you guys, it's on the board, it's never been through the building process. There's gonna be additional money. I mean, there's, when you get to that soil and, and the different things like that, there's always historically been costs that's associated with the problems you run into. That's all I got.
Okay, any other comments? I did have one. Kelly, you were gonna tell me exactly what happened to the other 30,000 on the contingency, since it went to, now, we just never had a chance to...
I didn't understand your question. I didn't understand.
Oh, on your contingency, you're showing a negative 330, negative 337,000. And then down here, you say contingency needed is 307,000. So there's a $30,000 difference between contingency on the second to last line, and I was wondering why are you, why are you short at $30,000, and where did you come?
Well, I understand your question. So the $337,000 was a budget amendment, and it was just a move of the contingency that was planned in the original budget at 17.5. The, the numbers just happened to be very similar, the 307,000, similar to the 337,000 that we moved back in the, the original, when we moved that 337,000, we did that budget amendment.
Oh, so we're actually coming in less contingency than what we had originally budgeted?
A small, yeah, a small amount, yes, because the contingency is so tight, yes.
And, Mr. Burnett, you can't, you sent us an email, or you, I, I know you sent me an email talking about the costs of the school compared to some other, other school costs, and I don't know if you might have that with us, but I think some of the Board members may not either be aware of the prevailing costs around the nation, and especially in this, in this state, and the fact that Beam came in rather well. The costs that Mr. Keiger had estimated with Mr. Whitkey on the 19.5 were substantially understated from the cost that, per square foot cost that actually came in from Beam when they came in with the original estimate. Do you, do you happen to have that with you?
I, I do. So the, as bid, the building by itself was $147.70 a square foot. The site was $25.76 a square foot. Building plus site was 173.46 a square foot. Add in allowances, I broke it down in quite a few different ways. So as awarded, it's, it's $173.68 a square foot. So that compared against some, three other schools that were bid in North Carolina, three other elementary schools. In 2013, we were at 173.68. One of them was $236.39 a square foot, and the other was $182.05 a square foot, and the third was $174.75 a square foot. So the last one was very close to ours. But, so those were North Carolina public schools, and they were elementary schools.
Do you remember the square foot cost that was used in our original 19.5 estimate? Because it seems like it was down in the 140 range or 125 range?
I don't recall.
Okay, I don't, I don't have that document with me. I didn't bring that tonight, so, okay, thank you.
This has a, a build-out capacity of 1,000, has a classroom capacity of 800.
All right, Board members, is this an action item, or is this a consent agenda item? Action, okay. All right, let's move on to the Board of Education Agency Agreements. Mr. Meehan and Mr. Burnett?
This agreement has been used in years past for other projects. The, the Board approved this similar agreement with Mount Pleasant Middle School replacement, I think it was just last month. This agreement has been edited, you know, for, to insert Odell grades through, through five elementary school and a couple other minor edits. The Board currently was the property owner at the Odell site, so one of the things we have to do is we have to transfer the title over to the county. And the reason we're doing that is that, again, it's, one of the provisions of this agreement is the sales tax reimbursement. So the project is gonna generate a great deal of sales tax. So this is providing a, an avenue, you know, for the sales tax reimbursement from the state to go back to the Board of Education and into this project. The Board is also gonna be the agent to the county for the construction and development of this project. So we'll be making sure that the plans, that the, the construction project is designed and built, that it's built according to the plans... to the plans and to the authorities having jurisdiction. And so this is an item that we went to earlier this evening with the, with the Board of County Commissioners. So they're, they're, it's on their agenda at the same time. They forwarded it to the, to next week's meeting. And really, we didn't have any, any issues with that. So the superintendent recommends the board approve the title change and the agreement.
Board members, any comments? Consent agenda?
So, just-
Mr. Harrison?
We're deeding the property to the county?
Yes.
Will that be into perpetuity? Or at some point in time, will the county deed the property back after the development hasn't been established and everything's settled down and the school is there? The county will deed it back to us?
Yeah, this is pretty common. Unfortunately, a couple years ago, school systems used to be able to develop the property and used to be able to get the sales tax. But there were some changes made a couple years ago. So, so that the board, and really the taxpayers, get the benefit of the sales tax reimbursement, these are the steps that we do. We deed it over to the county. The county has it on their books. Again, the sales tax, I'm sure you, you know how that works. Ask, so really, it's a deal with the county as to how long that'll, that'll be. It could be for, until the project's paid off. I don't know if you know, if there's any different, you know, until the project's paid off.
Yeah. If there's, normally, there's debt associated with the, the, the building, and we, we have to wait till the debt's paid off, and then we can get the title back. But in this case, it's cash. So we should be able just to, to, once we pay all of the expenses, be able to switch the deed back. It should be fine.
So the building comes back to us at some time in the future?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
When?
And right now, we have, you know, half of our properties are deeded to the county, half of our properties are deeded to us. And we just kinda do this juggle, depends on who, it's more advantageous for us to have, to hold title.
Okay. And just for clarification, what exactly is the name change? There's consist, inconsistency in a lot of these things. It says Odell Elementary School Replacement Project, Odell Grades 3.5 Elementary School Project, Odell Grade 3.5 Elementary School, the old Odell Replacement School with the old Odell site. What is, what is our?
Yeah, as far as, as far as the site, try to refer to it as the old Odell site, so that people are familiar with that and know which site we're talking about, to differentiate it from the existing, current Odell Elementary School. I don't think the, as Mr. Mehane mentioned-
Primary versus elementary?
Correct.
Let's just, let's just be consistent on what we call it from here on out.
So this is on the consent agenda, folks?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right. Now I'll need a motion. We've reached the end.
Thank you, Dave.
I'd like to have a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
Second.
David Harrison moved, and Tim Furr seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?